Okay, 6:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order. Let's start collecting the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call please, Maran.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Rayle?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Thank you, Maran. We will not have a student rep report tonight. Rachel is not with us. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of March 8th, the Special Board of Education meeting open and closed of March 8th, and the Special Board of Education of March 22nd.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on March 8th, the Special Board of Education meeting open and closed session on March 8th, and the Special Board of Education meeting on March 22nd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item is comments from citizens and delegations. Do we have any time, Maran?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move into committee reports. Ed Services, Mary.
Okay, thanks, John. The Educational Services Committee held its regular monthly meeting on April 5th. There were seven consent agenda items. Does anyone want anything held up?
Alright then, I would make a motion to approve the following. ES1, approval of the purchase of Edgenuity for the 2021-22 school year with the total cost of $26,250 to be paid from elementary and secondary school education relief funds. LHS Associate Principal Steve Thayer reviewed steps taken to address the needs of WRPS summer school students at secondary level. Three areas addressed with the online curriculum were rigor, multiple platforms, and COVID effect. Support with Edgenuity abundantly addresses all three areas and also offers Mung and Spanish language support. ES2, to approve the proposed KC5 social studies acquisition not to exceed $98,000 to be purchased with the WRPS SRT2 funds. Jake Bertinoli, District Social Studies Department Chair, explained the elementary committee process which reviewed materials from 12 separate vendors. The district equity coordinator helped provide a rubric to assess the equitability of the materials. ES3 was to approve the three applications to participate in the 11 requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the Start College Now program in the fall of the 2021-22 school year. ES4 was to approve of the one application to participate in the one requested course at UW Independent Learning through the Early College Credit Program in the fall of the 2021-22 school year. ES5 was approved the three-year program purchase of Mystery Science for a total cost of $22,729 to be paid from the Elementary and Secondary School Education Relief Fund, which is SRT2. Mystery Science is a supplement to the current elementary science curriculum and accurately is bound to align with the district science standards. A three-year program purchase provides a 48% cost savings. ES6 was to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding between WRPS and Wood County Head Start as presented in attachment D. The shared agreement represents the memorandum of understanding developed between WRPS and Wood County Head Start. This is not a financial agreement. It is required by the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And ES7 was to approve the proposed increase in staffing to address learning loss. The funds will come from SRT2 dollars.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve ES1, ES7. Do we have a roll call please, Maran?
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Okay, now we had five updates. First, benchmark books data from second trimester. Roxanne Philps, shared progress of students at the end of trimester two as measured by benchmark books. Overall, the district percentages of students who are meeting the reading benchmarks are improving. Second, use of SRT2 and American Rescue Plan Act dollars. Roxy reported that the dollars will be used for school safety and health, mental, social, and emotional well-being, and addressing learning losses sustained during the pandemic. The Board will receive ongoing frequent reports that detail how the federal relief funds are being utilized. C, virtual student enrollment updates. Virtual enrollments are down as more students are returning to the buildings. D, student travel. The Nashville Orchestra trip has been rescheduled for July 8th to July 11th. The cost will stay at $892 with no additional cost to families. One night at the hotel has been removed in order to cut down the costs that went up after the group size went down. The group is now at 40. And last, the four-day-a-week transition. Craig reported that the move to four days a week at the secondary level has been good. Over 800 staff and students have been surveillance tested with very low numbers of positive cases. Since students returned March 26th, there have been only four additional cases. Craig continues to communicate with families and hopes to go to five days a week in the near future. And with that, I move to...
I don't know if I should bring this up after A or wait for eight on the agenda. But when we're looking at the benchmark, the books, that report that we have, there's such a discrepancy of where they started in December. And those elementary kids were meeting five days a week. So I'm wondering if we can find some correlation that were these, you know, this class quarantined for umpteen weeks altogether? Was it individual students? Because there's such a discrepancy that... How much does the absence that we have where they quarantined have in that reading? Some classes didn't have much of a change, or they improved? So I'm wondering if we can find some correlation to that.
I'd be willing to look at that for you too. We also need to remember that they were starting a trimester behind as well. So some caught up faster than others did because the elementary bill, they're five days a week now. They weren't from March 15th of 2020 until they started in September. But I think it would be interesting to know if there was a correlation between how many times a classroom or a school building was quarantined, and if that did have a direct correlation. So I can get that for you if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, then I move to approve the Ed Services Committee meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021.
We have a motion of second to approve the Educational Services Committee meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to Business Services. Mr. Bembel?
Thanks, John. Business Services, we met on April 5th, started our meeting at 7:35. We had no public comment. Of our meeting, we had actually seven actionable items, even though the first one isn't for approval. So number, or excuse me, did anybody want anything held up? So the first item was the expectations and protocol around the recently revised Board Policy 672. And if you recall, that's the one where we changed the purchase limit of reporting to, from 10,000 to 25,000. But the administration wanted to know what we were looking for to see in our minutes and see any purchases update. So we kind of kicked it around a little bit in the meeting and figured that 10,000 was a good plateau since anything between 5 and 10, we'd end up with packets about that thick. And we don't really need to have that much paperwork listed. So the committee agreed that items greater than 10,000 and less than 25,000 will be listed under purchases updates. Items of a greater value of 20,000, 25,000 will be listed as actionable items. Okay, then the committee recommends, and I move for BS1, to termination of the 4K 660301 cooperative agreement between Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, Port Edwards, and Natuska. This started in 2009 and has worked very well for the district. However, over the years, there's the agreements that have to be adopted every year. And the open enrollment process has been streamlined and moved to an online format. So it makes more sense to go to the open enrollment process. It'll be less paperwork for us. And it'll also give us some better third-party accounts, pupil memberships, and that type of thing as we go forward. It'll also probably be financially more advantageous to do not get a percentage of the 26603. So that was the main reason for the termination of the contract. BS2 is a work plow purchase. Ed explained to us that the plow that we had been currently using has basically come to its end of life and had to have a little burial in the back lot of the Building and Grounds Department. So the committee recommends, and I move, to purchase a work plow truck from Wheeler's in the amount of $32,969 from the 21-22 Building and Grounds budget. This is also noted, it is a 2022 model. BS3 is purchase of switches. And typically, as we've talked about switches before, they last about three, throughout five years. These switches are actually seven years old that we are replacing, and they are becoming to the point of their obsolete, not supported, and need to be replaced. So the committee recommends, and I move, to approve a purchase of three Juniper switches and a five-year support contract from AE Business Solutions for a total cost of $26,539.99 to be funded using anticipated E-rate federal program dollars and 20% to be funded from the 21-22 technology budget. This company is the same one that provided the switches in the past. So we've had a good working relationship with them. BS4 is pitch cabling. After pitch closed, and of course, then we had Boys and Girls Club in there. Some of the cabling that was in there was removed. Some of it is so old that it can't be used anymore, and it's not up to any of current standards to be CAT5. It's CAT5, I think it's CAT5, it has to be or greater. A lot of it, we even had the old coaxial cable still in there. So the group that's going to be doing that is removing everything out of their equipment, everything. So that it'll be efficient, and all of that other cable, which is supposed to have been removed the last time they did. So the committee recommends, and I move, that the pitch facility at a total cost of $29,890 from current technologies to rewire our building there with 80% of it be funded using anticipated federal E-rate program dollars and 20% to be funded from a 21-22 technology budget. BS5 is a post-frame storage building out by the athletic complex at Rams with the fact that they had no budget or no athletics last year. They have excess in their budget. And this building is needed to store track items, and they want to use part of it as a concession. Part of, one side of it for concessions at their games when they have soccer, football, and track, and all of the other events that they hold out there. So the budget, the middle school budget is going to cover this purchase and construction. So the committee recommends, and I move, the proposal from DC Steinle Incorporated to construct a storage shed for track equipment at Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School at a cost of $31,640 to be paid from the 2021 middle school athletic budget. And our last item was our trade homes application selection. Last year, or excuse me, this year, we had four people looking for, or four applications for the trade homes. We went through them through our normal process of checks and balances and selected the application of Tim and Joan Radke for the construction of a home type 2021-2022 Lincoln High School Building Dreams Homes construction class.
Where's that home located, John?
This one will be the first, probably one of the first ones on the west side of town. It's actually in the town of Seagull, off of Blueberry Ridge Road, if you're going that way. Literally, if you could go where Gainer goes out, if it was complete, it'd be one mile passing here where it ends.
I think it's Seneca.
Seneca, yeah. I said Seagull, it's Seneca.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve BS1 to BS6. Do we have a roll call please, Maran?
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Then we had some updates and reports. We had a database of a CompuCare, which is management software. Nasco, some desk shields that were purchased. Odyssey Software, which is for special education students. Tweet Gear had won the bid on the hot water replacement at Howe. The Juniper switches, there was another switches purchased. The Fortigate renewal, which is a business program, I think. Laptops for students and staff. Capstone Pebble Go Database. Systems technologies for Howe and Rams on camera updates. And then Chromebooks for the elementary staff. With that, the committee moves and I recommend the approval of the balance of minutes.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Services Committee of April 5th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approved. Thank you, John. And next, we have Personnel Services. Sandy?
Personal Services met last Monday, April 5th. Meeting was called and ordered at 7:35, and that means we have six consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the five professional staff appointments for the 21-22 school year. Two, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the five support staff appointments. Three, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one support staff retirement. Four, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the three support staff early retirement. Five, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one professional staff resignation. And six, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one support staff resignation.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve PS1 to PS6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And with that, I move that the minutes of April 5th meeting be approved as printed.
Second.
A motion of second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Services Committee of April 5th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Referrals, Information Requests. Anything this month? Okay, we can move on to the Legislative Agenda. Troy, what's new?
Alright, thank you, John. So I just want to start by thanking everybody in this room for their leadership and their drive leading up to last week on both of our referendum questions passed by 10 and 12 points respectively. I know we'll talk a little bit about that later tonight, but I just want to thank Craig for his accessibility for holding listening sessions at various venues and providing your contact information if anybody has any questions. So thank you for being a terrific captain of the ship, and we'll be able to do really good things out of the results from last week. I also want to thank the voters for re-electing three highly effective board members, Katie, John, and Larry. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you over the course of the next year and hopefully beyond that. Statewide, the results were rather mixed in terms of pass/fail rate for referendums. Looking at the DPI referendum page, 42 out of the 70 that were on the ballot last week passed. So that's a 60% passage rate. Not, in terms of looking at the last few cycles, it is the lowest passage rate of recent cycles. Again, that's at a statewide level. 42 out of 70 did succeed last week. Now, we do have a couple things with budget talk on the horizon. There's a lot of legislative happenings as well, so I'll dive in there. And then we'll look at some more election results a little bit later in a couple of minutes here. I'm going to start working right after my last report and work most current. So that puts us at March time. The Joint Finance Co-Chairs on that date announced the schedule for public hearings on the state budget. Senator Howard Markline and Representative Mark Warren announced plans to hold three in-person public hearings on the budget, as well as a virtual hearing statewide that will happen in a couple of weeks. I'll talk a little bit more later on. The first hearing was last Friday at UW Whitewater. The two upcoming in-person, April 21st in Ranglander and April 22nd at UW Stowe. There is also a statewide virtual hearing option on Wednesday, April 28th. The co-chairs announced the creation of a budget input website where people can find information on how to submit input or testimony on the budget. The website is also the place where people can register for the virtual hearing in advance. Again, that one's taking place on April 28th. WASBE recently conducted an interview with Jesse Rodriguez. She is one of the members of the powerful Joint Finance Committee. I know they've been interviewing various legislators over the past couple of months. Her interview was the most recent in the overall series. Some key points for her interview is Representative Rodriguez said she is concerned about the level of spending in the governor's proposal. She did feel optimistic there would potentially be bipartisan agreement and mentioned special education aid and broadband expansion as potential shared priorities. Her full interview is available on the legislative blog. Next, I want to briefly look at the summary of legislative floor action. The legislature was in the floor on the third week of March. And we'll take a look at various bills that passed various houses. We'll start by looking at bills that passed both the House and the Senate. And four bills are now headed to the governor's desk. The first one is Senate Bill 39, Senator Dewey Strobel. This bill allows a pupil who attends a virtual charter school to participate in interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities in the pupil's resident school district. Such pupils must be allowed to participate on the same basis and to the same extent that the district permits pupils enrolled in the school district to participate. The next, Senate Bill 109 by Senator Joan Ballwick. This bill calls for during the 21-22 school year, this bill allows for a pupil to attend a fully virtual option as offered by a non-resident school board or a charter school located in a non-resident school district under full-time open enrollment program. Senator Ballwick also put forth Senate Bill 110. That was the third of four bills to clear both houses. This bill applies to current law, which limits the number of non-resident school boards to which a pupil may apply to attend a public school in a non-resident school district under the full-time open enrollment program to three non-resident school boards in any school year. This bill specifies that an application submitted to a non-resident school board through a pupil to attend a virtual charter school under the full-time open enrollment program does not count for purposes of this limitation. The last bill to clear both houses, Senate Bill 183 by Senator Devin Lehman-Hugh. This pertains to legislative oversight of federal COVID-19 funds. And Governor Evers has indicated that he will ultimately veto this bill. Two bills passed the state senate and now head to the assembly. The first, Senate Bill 52 by Senator Dewey Strobel. Under this Senate bill, if an incumbent files a notification of non-candidacy or fails to declare candidacy, that fact must be posted on the internet or in three different locations within the relevant jurisdiction if no internet site is available. This public notice requirement applies to the officer or body with whom current law requires a declaration of candidacy to be filed for a particular office. More pertinent to education policy, Senate Bill 95 by Senator Alberta Darling. This bill requires DPI to develop in consultation with WIAA and at least two pediatric cardiologists an information sheet on the overall nature and risk of sudden cardiac arrest during youth athletics. This sheet must talk about risks associated with continued play, information about testing, looking at risks, benefits, and overall basis, information how to request administration from a healthcare provider. According to the language of Senate Bill 95, this new requirement does not create any liability for or a cause of action against any person. Finally, two bills passed the state assembly and were sent to the senate in late March. Both bills by Representative Jeremy Theisvelt. First bill, Assembly Bill 23. This bill prohibits DHS and local health officers from requiring individuals to receive a COVID vaccine. This applies to any variant or mutation of the virus. Another bill put forward by Representative Theisvelt, Assembly Bill 25, prohibits employers from requiring employers or prospective employees to receive a COVID vaccine as a condition of continued employment. Again, both of those bills passed the assembly and head to the senate. Looking now, late March timeline. DPI created a webpage titled COVID Response and Relief Planning Recommendations. This is a resource page to assist districts in the use of one-time federal COVID relief funds. The webpage includes a number of categories vetted by experts as overall allowable costs under the federal relief funds and continues to be updated regularly. Last week, in addition to statewide referendum results being a mixed bag, Jill Underlee was elected as the next state superintendent of public instruction after earning 58% of the vote. She will earn her four-year term leading DPI starting this summer. She defeated Deb Kerr, former district administrator from the Brown Deer School District, who earned 42% of the vote in that race. Also, last week, there were two special legislative elections. Representative John Jagler will head to the upper chamber as he won his 13th senate district seat by seven points. This became open upon Scott Fitzgerald's election to Congress last November. And GOP candidate in the 89th Assembly District won by two-thirds of the vote. This seat was resigned by former Representative John Higgin. Last Thursday, which was April 8th, the senate and assembly committees on education held a joint informational hearing in the Capitol. The committees are chaired by State Senator Alberta Darling and State Representative Jeremy Theisvelt. They took public testimony on federal funding distributed to Wisconsin related to K-12 education. This hearing was covered live on Wisconsin Eye. The video in its entirety is now available. And in the coming weeks, WASBE staff will monitor the hearing and report anything worth noting in future legislative blogs. DPI and the Legislative Fiscal Bureau were following speakers, among others. As I mentioned at the beginning, last Friday was the first budget hearing, and that took place at UW Whitewater. Again, the legislature's Joint Finance Committee held its first of four total upcoming budget hearings, public hearings on the state budget. WASBE notes it is very important for K-12 to have a strong presence at these hearings. Looking at the legislative scene, lawmakers are not sold on the governor's plan for increased school funding. And WASBE calls for school leaders who cannot afford to be complacent. Their overall skepticism was highlighted by the line of questioning at DPI agency briefings before JFC this week and maybe further highlighted by Jill Underlee's election win as she was not the favored candidate of GOP legislative leaders. I know Speaker Ross had a tweet shortly, not thereafter the election, to highlight that. Again, that was the first budget hearing at Whitewater. The next one is taking place at Ranglander, April 21st. Last thing I will mention this month is that school boards statewide will hold their organizational meetings later this month to elect officers and designate roles. This is a requirement for boards to do so, and ours will take place on the 26th. And I think that takes us to May.
Thank you, Troy.
What's that one bill that you said passed about virtual, whatever, being able to participate in that?
Yes, that was, that passed both chambers.
It passed both?
Senate Bill 39, Dewey Strobel.
Do they have to abide by the district's athletic code of conduct?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
The other one is by the governor?
I'm sorry, let's ask.
Is it opposed by the governor?
I would be shocked if it goes further, but I don't know the answer to that.
The other one that I find, I don't know why the legislature's involved with, was the heart. The risk of cardiac arrest. I mean, anybody that does a WIAA, takes a test, or has to go through the spiel before you can take your test and be approved, the sports meetings you have to go through. They beat the death out of heat, heat stroke and that type of thing, and practicing in heat. And then they beat the death out of heart attacks and that type of thing. And then the other one is concussions. So I mean, protocol on that, and then every coach has to be certified, or this one? Every coach has to be certified A.D. now? And on first aid? And I think it's A.D. now, so, and that's all explained in the A.D. portion, so I don't know why they're spending time on legislation to do this when it's, it's been done by the WIA already. I mean, it's just one of the three things that they always, and every, if you referee four sports, you get it in all four sports, the concussions, the heat, even though basketball's in the middle of a gym and you don't have outdoor practices, but you still get the heat.
And that one was put forth by Alberta Darling, Chair of Education Committee.
Yeah, that one just, I don't understand, spend time when it's already been in place and the medical, the first aids are required and the A.D. isn't quite required by coaches, so it's, it's just, it boggles my mind.
Thank you for the report, Troy. Next, we can move on to the bills.
Hey, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have roll call, please, Maureen.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Next, we can move into unfinished old business. We have an update on the spring election referendum results and the next steps moving forward.
All right, so as you heard from Troy, and as you well know, we had two questions on the ballot, and those results, in addition to the board race and the three seats, congratulations once again, have been canvassed this evening and certified, therefore is official. Both questions were approved, and our three board members already mentioned retained their seats. With that said, the levy override conversation is something that we just kind of pick up and run with, so this will be something that you, of course, have been in the loop on and will continue to be in the loop on into the future. The rub now has more to do with, I would argue, ESAR dollars and what that looks like in terms of budgeting in the light of the referendum dollars, but nonetheless, anytime we have any ability to earmark or delineate where we're spending and from what and how it'll be applied and so forth, that will be made clear to you folks as we move forward through, you know, the next school year and beyond. With regard to the bond issue question, we have a preliminary meeting with a core group as well as our architectural firm, PRA, Steve Kekefer, our architect, and Myron, our construction manager, around the development of a schedule for these construction projects, because it's clear that this is going to take place over the term of a couple of years in order to get all of these things done. As I, as it stands right now, the plan is to start with Lincoln additions and then move into renovations at some point, and then kind of intermingling or intermixing of the think gym and school entrances and these other miscellaneous things that are going on. Once we have established our core team, what we think a reasonable, and the core team, by the way, is myself, Aaron is our business manager, Ed is our buildings and grounds director, and then, of course, we'll loop in relevant building administration at the appropriate time. But to give us the grand scheme, that relatively small group in conjunction with our architect and construction company, general contractor, will develop what we feel would be a reasonable timeframe to accomplish these goals, and then very clearly at some meeting here in the future, you'll have access to that, and we can discuss that at least to a degree. So, I would anticipate you folks seeing something here for the May rounds of meetings about what we're anticipating and what we're planning. We will start on things as soon as we possibly can, but keep in mind that with additions and renovations, you're talking about bidding processes and all these things, so it's not as though this is going to happen, you know, in a couple of months, but it'll be, we'll be rolling along in a couple of months. And that's pretty much it. Thanks to everybody for their assistance and work on behalf of moving through a challenging year and an election cycle that was very interesting, as Troy already mentioned.
Right in the news, are you?
Yeah, for sure. The reason lumber and building costs, is that going to affect us much? Oh, the, the costs? Yes. So, one of the aspects of escalating building costs is what Larry's talking about. One of the things that, that I've asked early on was, are we seeing the same thing, and in fact, I think that was, Tuesday was the vote, so that was probably Wednesday, as it became clear that, you know, the likelihood of passage was fairly good, I had reached out to our architect and asked that question. And on the front end, the answer to that is, yes, there are some things that are impacted, but not to the degree that it would be for things like lumber and private sector home sort of construction versus more steel and commercial and block and that sort of thing. So, those, those prices are, of course, an increase, but not at the same rate that some of the other materials are for like homes and other, you know, smaller scale construction. With that said, one of the things that we ensured we did as well is produce numbers that we thought were within a reasonable range, so that over time, when we're making modifications to a school entrance, clearly nobody can predict the future that far in, in the advance, but there should be some leeway with regard to us still being able to accomplish everything we want to accomplish, even with some changes, you know, in construction costs and price for materials. So, on the front end, no, and that's also one of the reasons why, because the question might be, well, why would you do Lincoln first and not secure the school entrances, get that done ASAP? And that's the primary reason, is to ensure that we move on the front end of that with a more comprehensive construction that involves more materials than not. So, that's one of the things that's, that's modifying at least to a degree of the timeline, because frankly, we could, you could start anything anytime you wanted, right? Because a lot of these things aren't really going to impact kids and buildings, so it's a little less about that and more about how we can capture the best prices at the right time and competitive bidding and that sort of thing.
Dizzy time.
Yeah.
The next item is new business, possible action on employee appointments, resignation, retirement requests.
Yeah, just one on there. Kristi Mel was offered a position at Grant Health Entry in the Special Education Department. Comes to us with close to 20 years of experience, 15 of which is teaching special ed, outstanding references, so we're thrilled to have her.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional staff appointment as discussed just this evening.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the professional staff appointment of Kristi Mel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Here you go. Looking at the calendar, we have a council for instructional improvement meeting on the 19th at 8:00 AM, and as Troy mentioned, our board organizational meeting will be on Monday, the 26th at 6:00 PM. Then we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.